All right, I bring, call this meeting to order. Uh, can we please stand and salute the flag? Get the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Don, would you give the roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Shadwick, I see he is absent. Commissioner Guile.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, public forum and citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes. Come on up. State your, state your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Allen Lindholm. I live at thirty-six forty-seven South Lightville Road. I was here at the meeting last week and presented some feelings and ideas about our road, which is Waterwell Road, west from Burma to South Lightville Road. I appreciate the, your agreement with me that the road was bad and that it does need extension, extensive reconstruction. That morning, I had sent an email to Gary Nash about the good job that they had done on the road, repairing it after the sloppiness and stuff. And he said that that was just a Band-Aid, that it needed to be definitely reconstructed in some way. I was surprised when I got the email back. He said that nothing would probably be done until the lawsuit was settled. Um, I was not aware that there was a lawsuit involved in this. Apparently, four or five years ago, one of the county commissioners filed a lawsuit, and I don't know what the details are. And I sent an email to Mr. Montoya to see if I could find the details of the lawsuit. But apparently, the city owns the land around the landfill, and I, I assume probably half of it, and then the county owns the other half, but the county maintains it. So that might have been something to do with the lawsuit. I, I have a map that, uh, Neil gave me yesterday. If you guys would like a copy of it, I made copies of it.
Sure.
Thank you. And I was hoping that Lucy might remember this, that you were on the city commission before, and do you remember some kind of a suit being filed?
Uh, I think that happened, I, I believe that happened before, or after my-
After your tenure.
After my tenure with the city.
My reason for visiting again is to challenge you to find out why this lawsuit is holding this up.
And I, I thank you for your email. You emailed me regarding this as well, and I am a little bit familiar with that, but not with, not with parts of it. So I too had emailed Mr. Montoya and found out, what day did you send me that email?
Pardon?
What day last week did you send me that email? Was it Wednesday or Thursday? Found out my email, outgoing email, has not been working for two days. And when people start calling me wanting to know why I hadn't responded an email, that's when I discovered my, I was getting email, it just wasn't going anywhere.
Well, I knew you guys were busy with the budget.
So, uh, but, but on Wednesday or Thursday is when I started having trouble with emails. So I don't know if Mr. Montoya ever got my email. He didn't respond to yours, which makes me wonder if he is out of town. He wasn't on the agenda today. So I'm just wondering if he, um, is out of town or on business or something. So I don't have an answer to your question yet either.
Can you, as the commission, investigate this and do something to find out and, and inform me or-
I'd be interested to know, because I, I know that the, I've always known that the city owns that property. But that was not the reason they didn't fix the road.
Exactly.
The reason they-
That was not the reason.
The reason they didn't fix the road was, there was a, a person out there that wouldn't sign over their part of the property-
Yeah.
-to allow us to go in and do it.
None of the people signed it. There was only one person that signed that letter that was sent out.
But-
Like, 'cause I checked with all the property owners.
Well-
That was in agreeance or declined, uh, to have the road paved? Or fixed, I should say?
It was, what the, the letter was, was a registered letter saying that if we wanted to, that they wanted to move the road north, because the road was out of line with the other county roads-
Well, they have to have so many feet, they have to have so many feet to widen the road too.
We would have to give them forty feet of our land beyond their easement-
Correct.
-which would be about fifty-five feet. And I've got a pond that's almost twenty feet from the easement, and, uh, it would have just taken the whole pond out. And I was not gonna sign it, you know?
Okay.
None of the landowners to the east of me, 'cause I live right on the corner, all the way to Burma, none of them signed it. Uh, Mr. Engelbert, that lives across the road from me, on the corner of, of Waterwell and Lightville on the west side, did sign it. He was the only person that did sign it.
Okay, so out of, out of all those residents, only one person was in agreeance and everybody else-
No, that's not the way we heard it, was it Jim?
Yeah.
No.
But see, we weren't commissioners then, so we don't know.
No, we don't know, but-
So I think, yes, we could look, have an investigation, look into it and find out-
Sure.
-exactly what happened, so we are well informed on, because that's not the way I understand it all these years.
According to Neil, this is sitting someplace on some judge's desk or his files or something, has never been ruled-
I've never heard that.
He said that the lawsuit was settled.
No, that's a sec, that's a separate, uh, legal action that is pending, uh-
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
There, there's a separate legal action that's pending that has, um, uh, it's, it's with the city to have an interpretation of the statute on what can be annexed into the city or not. And that's the lawsuit that is-
But that had nothing, that had nothing to do with us fixing the road.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with Waterwell.
Yes, and, you know, if, if we had the, right now, we're starting to put, in the last few years, money has been, eight hundred thousand a year has been put aside to build a new road and bridge. We're putting that money back now, and we're adding it into our budget next year, to be able to start fixing these roads up again. We have to have the money to do it. I would say, after this year, the money might be in there. So we, we're really, that's where we're at right now, is, is the, of the commissioners, if we had the money right now and we said, and if we didn't have the money, we could do that road. But we're gonna, if we do it, when we do it? 'Cause it's number one on the list.
It is, I was gonna mention that.
I'm not, we're not, we're not trying to say if we could do it, it's when we do it. First of all, we're gonna get this shop building fixed this year, to know exactly how much money's left over. And we're gonna have, I think we're gonna have a lot of money left over, and that's gonna go to our roads. And, um, it's going to the roads right now, 'cause we're putting out more rock than we generally do. We're one, just like when you needed rock, we got the rock out there. And we're gonna come up, we're gonna get the money to fix these roads. And your road is, my knowledge, is number one on the list. And then we've got Ohio Street, we've got Simpson, we've got some other streets that need to be, but-
Really doesn't have anything to do with the lawsuit?
No.
No, and, and, you know, I apologize that Mr. Nash might have given you some incorrect information, and on his behalf, I apologize for that, uh, because he is still relatively new. He might have gotten that confused with that.
Well, both, both of them said that. Neil and Gary.
Well, it surprises me-
Well, I think it is one of the roads that is in question.
But I don't think it doesn't have anything to do with that suit.
Yeah, it is one of the roads.
So it, yeah, so it could, it can be repaired. We don't have to wait to find out what the pending lawsuit says.
But you don't have to wait for the pending lawsuit?
No, no, no.
Well, there, there is another possibility, and that is that to do the road the way they want to, it takes a wider easement, and if the city's not gonna give that on the south side, then it's gonna have to come out of the north.
But I don't think the city said they wouldn't give it, did they? They've got lines over there, they've got stuff buried in the ground on the, on the city side. So we've got a limit to where we can go there, but I don't think we have a problem with the city of doing that road.
Yeah.
And, okay, we, we have another man that'd like to speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tom Rickstree, forty-five hundred West Schilling. I've looked into this deal quite a bit. I, the way I understand it, and I've talked to a lot of people out there, I have not talked to you, sir. I live on Schilling, right around the corner there. The deal is, the engineer wants a superhighway built out there, 'cause he wants all this land, he wants the, the, the bypass, four lane, all this other, so that's gonna take him on. But any person could go out there and stand at the top of the hill, as he looks every day, you could look like, and there's a crook in it. The engineer wants to straighten it out and make everything perfect. That takes a lot of money. All we're asking is to pave the stinking thing. We're driving down it now, everybody's good, put pavement on the thing, and we don't need to build it for the people in two thousand and fifty. We need to cover it up right now, and to heck with all this, what, fifty-foot easement out there? There's not a road in the county that's as wide as he wants to make this thing, unless you go to one thirty-five. And that's the problem right there. And there's a crook in it. You sit on top of that hill out there and look, there is a crook in it, a dog leg, but it's been there for how many years? Everybody's happy the way it is? The problem comes, these people don't wanna give up their property, because the city don't wanna move, or it's gonna be expensive, because they got all the utilities on the south side of the road, and they're gonna have to move them. So they're gonna come on the landowners, instead of taking care of their business. My saying is, just pave the thing, quit worrying about it. There's roads all in this county, all over this state, that they got the asphalt right to the edge of the road, and there's a bar ditch right there. Well, he wants a nice smooth landing on both sides, la da 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 da. Well, that's where the problem is. I think it's an engineering problem versus taking these people's property away from them. That's what I've heard from Mike Harvey, I've heard from a lot of folks out there. I've talked around, I've talked to the guys that run the road graders. I've talked to the people that run the fire district out there, the water department, all the whole thing. Ah, they won't do it because they wanna do this and they wanna do that. So that's what I got to address.
So, so you think that there would be a consensus that, uh, all of you and your neighbors that use that road all the time are okay with it being a little crooked? Just repair it? And, and life, and life, life would be good?
They had that, uh, right where I understand, across the road, if you didn't, they had that, uh, contention to have during World War II? That road's been there since then. That was a major road. Okay, the state, when they built the mom and range out there, they come out and built miles, a mile south, which nobody uses, they use Waterwell. They spent their money down there, and so we'll use that one, well, nobody goes there, 'cause there's a dirt road down there, not even got gravel on it, we can't get to there. So it's just, it's just, it's just a, a technical deal that engineers things, what I see happening. Have you heard that same story?
It comes, it comes back to our policy on upgrading roads, and what you gotta have a wider easement, and that's part of the policy, and so we're stuck with. We need to address that policy.
We can change policies.
Exactly.
And, and we are, have changed some policies, and we're gonna address Waterwell Road.
Yeah, and, and-
Right, and at this point right now, my thought is, it's gonna take a couple months to get these bids in, to see how much money we're gonna have left over on road, road and bridge. We can't spend money, we will spend money that we've got, and we've got some money, and I think we'll have enough. And, and when we were here, they told us they wanted to tear up, what was those roads out by Headville and the one north of town here that they wanted to tear up last year, and the one on North Street?
Oh, North Street and then Pleasant Hill Road and St. Moll, we done all three of those.
They came to us and wanted to tear those roads up, Road and Bridge did. Make them a dirt road again. Why would we, I said, we're not gonna go backwards on our roads. They went out, then spent a lot of money, fixed them, that's been almost two years ago, they're still in good shape. I'm with you, you don't need to have the superhighway just to build a road, and-
Well, right now, they, they really did a good job. They got a nice hump in it, they got a solid, they've got a good base, you can go seventy mile an hour down that road. I, believe me, it'll go seventy mile an hour. It's good. But, oh, we need some, put some asphalt on it, we don't need to, and I guarantee you, they're looking to going in and tearing that whole thing out again, go back three foot deep and put this in. Just put some blacktop on it and go from there.
A half a mile of asphalt, they said on Grand Street, where they, they want that. He said they could do that for a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Well-
They spent thirty-five thousand to do with the road?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we got a good base there, not with a, not with a-
What if you did it for three times that though? Or four times that? It'd still be what your money you spend every time we go out and work, and I said that this morning. I said it this morning, we spent more money out there wasting time on that road than if we just fixed it to start with.
Be done with it.
Yeah, so we're, we're on, we're on the right track for you.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that in, because it's, in my opinion, silliness worrying about building a superhighway out there. We just want the road, 'cause it, just make it as wide as, as, uh, Waterwell is between Burma and town, for crying out loud. And it'll, it's that wide right now. And all he wants, all this other stuff.
All right, well, your three minutes is up.
I think so.
All right. My paper out here. And are there any other?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ray Ruska, two thirty-five North Santa Fe. At the present time, the county's been working on the budget, you know, diligently here, re, you know, about this last week. That's just very important. Uh, I came across, uh, an, an item which I have thought would be appropriate to increase the budget for Access TV. By increasing funding to Access TV to pay for live streaming, where the public can see this as it's going on in the study sessions upstairs. I've looked into this, estimated cost, probably a couple of thousand dollars. This is basically so the people can see what's going on in county government. And, uh, since the budget isn't set in stone, and it looks like we might meet budget, you know, with a little left over, a couple of thousand dollars for public information, I would consider a very cost-effective way to provide public info, uh, pub, the public information. Otherwise, they don't know what's going on. We always talk about these issues, oh, we did this upstairs, or we talked about that upstairs. Why not start streaming this live? Then the public can just flip on their internet connection and kick right over there and see what's going on.
Well, I would think that if we were gonna stream something live, it would be better to do it down here, where there's cameras and things are set up to do it. And, uh, and I'm for the public knowing what's going on. They need to, they need to hear what's going on. So, you know, if, if we were gonna do something, I, I would, I would be more inclined to talk to the Commissioners about, and seeing if this room is available in the mornings, eight-thirty till now, and just do it all right here. And, uh, it would be, that room up there would be a little hard to have cameras moving around. It just would be better right here, if we were gonna do that.
I don't believe you need cameras moving around, you just need-
Well, but this is a lot better setup.
Well-
They got, we got a podium, we got microphones. Now, you wouldn't hear, you wouldn't be able to hear Dave, you wouldn't be able to hear me.
You gotta change, change around your entire schedule to meet a situation, and even though that's a good suggestion, the real work, or a lot of the real work takes place before you guys get here.
So, Mr. Ruska, are you saying that when you looked into that, for them to have a person here to film, uh, an additional three hours, or, or to livestream, an additional three hours? Basically, that's what it is, until we get down here at eleven o'clock. Uh, it's two thousand dollars additional to our allotment for them, um?
Well, just a budget item and-
He was just saying, give them a two thousand dollar increase, is what he's saying.
Will that cover that cost? Is that, uh, I, I, I don't know how much-
I've actually checked into that, and it's a lot less than that.
Okay.
But I guessed high, because situations occur that, you know, you can set a camera up there and do a panoramic, and then you'll, after you start listening to those, you'll find out who's talking and what they're talking about.
So you're gonna pass a microphone around? How you gonna, how you gonna hear, Ray? I don't see how-
No, you're gonna have to pass the microphone-
We tried having a microphone on the table, it, it didn't work out too good.
Well, maybe it'll take a couple of microphones mixed together.
Well-
That, that could actually work too. It's not a-
And, and there is also a volunteer for Access TV, that volunteers can come in and do that. Isn't that correct?
Well, basically, I think Access TV's probably really busy already with everything else they're doing. They don't need to be-
No, but there's volunteer, there could be volunteers that could take on a, a job like that.
Well, the way I perceive this, you just flip on a switch, it hooks up to the internet, and you're watching it. I mean, it's not that hard to do. We got, we're gonna live in a technology world. Everybody's got smartphones. Everybody's got computers.
So why are you saying we would need Access TV to do that then?
Three hours, more of it.
I mean, it would just tie into that.
They're the ones that, uh-
Television time.
No, they're the ones that could actually promote it to work properly, because they're already in that business. It would be easy for them to, to do that. And I've already approached them about this, and I-
Well, I'd say maybe in three or four weeks, they could come over and talk to us about it.
Yeah, you know, they're, they've been a great partner for years, and so I would, I would highly, I would highly encourage them to come in a few weeks, and I would love to listen to, the, the technology that they've, they probably have come a long way in the technology, and I know they're in the community quite a bit. And like I said, they do the city and the county quite a huge service, and we have a, a huge partnership with them in the, in the last years. So that would be something we should probably look into. Look into that.
Well, I don't know if they're gonna be able to supply volunteers to do this.
Well, you don't know, Ray, that's why we need to talk to them. You don't know that, we need, you're, you're just an in-between guy with thoughts. We need, if you'd like us to act on this, we need to talk to them, or you can go be a volunteer and come over the cameras and do it for them. I mean, we, you gotta start somewhere, why wouldn't that be a good place to start?
I've already started on this deal.
Well, I'm s- So what do we talk to, do we-
At least be open to the fact that it's about public information and access to county government.
And I think, is everybody here open on that idea? I am.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're past that point now. We just gotta get something going on.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ray. All right, anybody else? Yes?
Karen Shade, one-one-one, Wisconsin. I do wanna support Ray Ruska's idea of expanding coverage, in whatever form, be it down here or upstairs, on Access, I think the public would find it highly informative, um, as to how decisions get made and, and what's going on. I, I think that's great. I'd also just like to skip forward a little bit. Um, I have no way of anticipating what the announcements will be today. But, um, usually Dave Smith has a gem or two to share, he shares with us. One of the things I've noticed is, um, there's frequent conversation about, um, how the founding fathers, made many positive references to Christianity, but there are relatively few comments that he makes about Judaism. And there were many founding fathers who happened to be of Jewish ethnicity and faith. Um, I don't know, given the nature of Commissioner Smith's beliefs, whether he's a friend of Israel or if he's an anti-Semite, because back in the seventeen hundreds, many Jews were told to put their hand on the Bible and swear allegiances on the Bible, which contains the New Testament, which is difficult for them to do. And just as I support the Christian faith and the Jewish faith, I support all faiths and no faith. And so it just seems bringing it this full circle. It's, it's an interesting distraction, and perhaps you wanna campaign on this, because there's certainly been lots of letters to the editor about it. But there's really important issues that this county can control, like the quality of Waterwell Road, of resolving the issues with the city on tipping fees and the annexation issues, of, of addressing multiple, multiple, more important things to the lives of these people than, than for us to spend our time on, on the other. So thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, would you like to announce item one?
This is approval of agenda for the public forum as presented today.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
And second. Do you have a second?
Second.
Five seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. All right, item number two.
Approval of the county commission minutes for April twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I may that we accept the county commission minutes of April twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen, as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Five seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero. All right, item number three.
This is request for action one forty-six dash sixteen. It's a bid award for desktop PC replacements. I have, uh, comments by Brad Bowers, our computer technology director. He is here to present that to you.
Morning, Brad.
Good morning. As, uh, you may recall, several weeks ago, um, we came forward to, uh, to ask to, uh, expend the money that had been budgeted for, uh, for forty-five, uh, desktop PCs. At that time, uh, we were instructed to, uh, take, the, the, the item was tabled at that time, and we were requested to go out for bid on those, on those desktop PCs, and that is what we did. We received the, the bids back. Dell was the low bidder. The government sector of Dell was the low bidder for four seventy-one oh seven per unit, for a total cost of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents. And I will make note that that is, um, twenty-four dollars cheaper than what the original quote was.
Which would be eleven hundred dollars altogether.
Right. I asked, I asked the Dell representative about that, and I was told that because we were also pricing some other, some other technology with them, she was able to get a little bigger, a little bigger volume discount.
Good.
So, so anyway, um, staff recommends that, uh, that the commission accept the, the low bid from Dell for seven, four seventy-one oh seven per unit, for a total cost of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight fifteen. And these, these units will be installed throughout various departments in the county.
And we have twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-five budget in our, uh-
That's correct.
Two thousand and sixteen, so we have the money there.
That was approved in the two thousand and sixteen budget, yep.
So any commission have any questions on that? I think we, saving eleven hundred dollars there is pretty good.
Yep. Thanks for the saving.
Well-
Anybody from, anybody from the, uh, audience like to comment? Then I think I will ask that we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I may that we, uh, award the bid, uh, RFA number one six, forty-six dash sixteen awarded to Dell. Let's, let's see, yeah, the forty, a bid for, for forty-five units, desktop computers, to Dell in the amount of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents, as recommended by staff.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Lucy seconds that? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carrie's four, zero. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Brad. All right, item number four.
This is request for action one fifty-two dash sixteen. It's Archer Daniels Midland Grant Award for Rural Fire District number five. I have David Turner here, chief of the fire district, to update you on this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I proceeded with this grant back in March, uh, early part of March. Applied for a grant for twenty-five hundred through ADM Milling. Basic, basically to replace some booster line nozzles that we're having issue with out in the field. I applied for the grant, received notification about around April fifteenth that they reviewed the grant and accepted it. And, uh, I'm just here to, uh, get your approval to move forward. Uh, this is a non-matching grant, so it's basically just twenty-five hundred dollars flat fee to us, and, uh, so we can, uh, go ahead and purchase some nozzles.
All right. Our, um, ADM's a quite a accomplished company for our county for a lot of years through, uh, J.J. Veneer, and I remember as a kid, uh, the red gooch circle. We used to cut those out and go down and get a toy, or, I got a little radio that you could plug on. So they've done a lot for our community for many numbers of years, and, and it's really good that they did this, and, and you had a man there contact you and tell you about it, to let you know, and, and, uh-
Fortunately, it kinda worked out.
Yeah.
I had no idea about the grant, and, uh, he contacted me and basically said that they've got money to give away, so-
So they're helping the community, aren't they?
Well, that's, that's nice to keep your eyes open.
Yeah.
And ears, that's good.
Any other comments about that? Any comment from the audience? Well, I think I'll make, uh, ask that we have a motion addressing RFA one fifty-two sixteen.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept RFA one fifty-two sixteen, the Archer Daniels Midland Company grant, in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of nozzles, uh, for RFD number five.
I'll second that.
Lucy and Jim seconds it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Carrie's four, zero. Okay.
Please, Commissioners.
Thank you.
And other business, I guess I still have a little other business. I never have, Don, got my, never came this week, my ballots. So I guess I'll have to come and find out how to get new ones, and-
Yeah.
I have had a couple people address me outside last week that they never got theirs.
Well, they can call us.
So I would, uh-
They'll come in, one or the other.
But I kinda think one-
They, they got mailed out, so-
But remember this, this is only for people that live in Salina, not in the county. But remember this, this is only for people that live in Salina, not in the county. You won't, you won't get one in the county. And some people might think they should've got one and this is for Celine County, Salina residents.
City.
City residents, so-
Regarding the, the yes vote-
The yes vote.
For the, for the tax, tax increase.
I thought it was regarding the no vote. Anyway. Yes, no vote.
The, the signs around town have said yes for a better Salina, so.
Anyway.
I haven't seen those signs.
We're not, we're not discussing that. Ray, Ray, hang on. Anyway, um, that was my announcement that, uh, what should I do, Don? Do I need to come to your office and-
Yeah, just come on up when you're done today.
And request those and, and if anybody else hasn't received those, I'd like to have you get ahold of Don.
I don't, to my knowledge, I don't think that the originals came back, so I don't know where they are. You know, once they go to the post office, we don't have any control.
Either the postman got stuck between the seat or they delivered them to another address. And that happens a lot in my area. I get a lot of mail that I, comes to my, my box and I have to take it to other people. And other people are taking theirs to mine. And somebody might've thought, well, we know how John's voting, we're throwing his way. I don't know what happened, but I didn't get it. That's, that's important.
I hope that is what happened.
Well, what happened is I didn't get it, so I need it.
And just to remind the public that that deadline, I believe, is May tenth.
Yes, next, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, we have to mail.
Does it, when does it have to be mailed then?
You, they have to receive it by noon next Tuesday.
So they need to really get it in the mail.
And you have to remember, that was good with Wichita, so.
Mm-hmm, so-
There's always an extra day in there.
Well, there might be two days. You better have it in the mail on the seventh or so.
Or walk it in on that morning.
Or walk it in, yeah. So it's due at noon on the tenth. Um, is there any other business?
I would like to read something and, in all respect to the comment prior, I am not anti-Semitic, quite the opposite. But also check your watch and see how long this takes. Quote from George Washington. "Of all the dispositions and habits which lead to political prosperity, religion and morality are indispensable. It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits and to humbly implore His protection and favor."
That took, uh, twenty-five seconds. All right, is there any other announcements? And we will be leaving, the commissioners are gonna be out of town for a couple of days. We're not out of town necessarily, but we'll be going to a meeting in Manhattan. And, um, do we have any more business upstairs? I think we're pretty well done, aren't we?
You have the agenda on, on their agenda and anything else?
So we're gonna meet up, we'll meet up there right after this and sign our papers and, and get with Linda on the agenda.
I move that we, uh, adjourn this portion of the meeting and reconvene upstairs here in just a couple of minutes to finish our business.
I'll second that.
Jim seconds it, Lucy and all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, four, zero, Carrie's, we adjourn.